Good morning, this is the Park County Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, May 24th at 9:00 AM. We have no public hearings this morning, no scheduled public comment. Is there any public comment for items on the agenda today? Please, absolutely, and just name it so we have it for the record.
So, good morning. My name's Michelle Huberaga, and my address is 711 Lock Laving Drive. And I have come to say on behalf of the Park County Land Council, which is a grassroots community group here in Park County with about 3,000 supporters, 650 members. And we've been very engaged in the issue around growth. So today, I'm here because we did some research that I wanted to share with you. And I want to just submit it on the record and tell you a little bit about it. So as you all know, there has been a lot of concern about growth in our community. And our goal was to better understand those concerns so that we could be a more effective organization. And we've been working in the community for a long time. There's been a lot of opposition to big industrial developments in the county. And we've been involved in that. We've heard hours of community conversations, some that you guys participated in about growth, planning, and zoning. And it felt like people really understand that change is happening, that there was a problem, but it was hard to kind of pinpoint the solution. So the goal of our poll was to listen to the community and try to better understand the issues. So I'm going to give you the results in a memo, and then you can also find them on ourparkcounty.com. So I'll just quickly go over the high points. Let me get my notes here. So the first thing that, you know, I thought was really encouraging, people in Park County think that we have a really high quality of life. That's really clear. We asked people what, you know, what their values are, and the top values are natural beauty, access to public lands, clean river, neighborliness, and for the most part, people feel like they've got it pretty good. The top concern is one that we're hearing all over the country and across Montana is housing. And in most of the folks, you know, we can, we do the demographic, we hire pollsters, so it's scientific data, and they look at the demographics. A high percentage of people own their home, but they're still very concerned about whether the next generation can live here. But we also see that housing is impacting our small businesses because we have a shortage of workforce. So another thing we learned was that people don't know very much about what rules exist. So there's kind of a lack of information out. So education and outreach is going to be very important. And I've been participating in these meetings, and we continue to hear that process is really important, people want to be involved. And the past couple of years have been really hard for that. So I want to just say that we appreciate that the county spent two years listening, took a pause, and then incorporated those comments and are rolling out a new process. So thank you for that. And, you know, we hope that that process continues with, you know, with an effort to hear from as many people as possible. So some of the other questions we asked about, what rules and regulations exist, and folks overwhelmingly think that commercial and industrial development, that we need some reasonable ground rules. So two-thirds of our respondents said that we need to put guardrails on that type of development. But that's encouraging, that we're moving in the right direction. Interestingly, we also, we can break out the demographics, and we saw there was more support from county residents than city residents, only by a very slim margin. But that was, I think, surprising, or just counter to a lot of the assumptions that we make. So we think you're on the right track, that there is support for reasonable guardrails around industrial and commercial development across our county. And I really encourage you to continue to move forward, encouraging you to get as much input in the process and improving the draft as we go along. One thing that the new regulation that you're working on, the ag and residential preservation district, doesn't deal with is housing. I think that was really intentional to keep that separate. But as we learned, that's still a really big concern in the community. And so I, we've been working with the Park County Housing Coalition and really encourage you to follow their lead, adopt the Housing Action Plan, and work to implement that with our counterparts, city and other community partners. And I wanted to share that they are doing an open house this Thursday, the community foundation right downtown, 5 to 7. 5 to 7. So in some, we have a very big county with a lot of different opinions. And we really want, encourage you to continue to reach the middle, you know, the working middle, people that live here, love it here, are raising their kids here, got a lot at stake for the future. We want this place to stay special, want to see the nice sky, breathe the clean air. Most of our businesses depend on the clean water, the Yellowstone and the Shield, and the wildlife we share with the landscape. So those are values that we're shining through and we're, want to continue to work together for that. So thank you. I know that taking that first, these steps forward is hard, and we appreciate it, and hope that you continue and continue to hear from as many people as possible.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, just a quick question. Any thoughts or comments on survey methodology or? Thanks, Gary.
So I'm not the pollster, but we hired a pollster who does polling for GLP politics. And the methodology is spelled out at the beginning of the memo.
Sorry, I didn't realize this was coming. Thank you.
She's, it's a very legit firm, and they stand by their results, and that's how they're, you know, they're credible as a result of that. But they, they use email, phone. They also conducted in-depth surveys with county residents and city residents to formulate the questions. And then you can see that from the polling results, it leaned a little bit Republican. That's what county does. So the demographics in the poll reflect the demographics in our county, and that's all the scientific methodology that the pollsters have to use.
Bottom of page four, there's a little bit more.
Do you have an extra copy you could pass to us for correspondence?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can email it as well.
Terrific. Thanks, Gary. All right, thanks.
I'm going to stick around for the other exciting stuff.
An additional public comment for items now on the agenda. Okay, action items, discussion, decision, and signing a notice of award for Mission Field Taxi Way project. Mr. Tinsley, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is, as you recall, we there's a contract in here to, we approved the contract last time for the Mission Field Taxi Way. It's actually two taxiways we're turning out for a better price.
So this is actually kind of a housekeeping item, follow-up. Okay. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the notice of award.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion.
You know, I certainly have received some comments about is there any turning back? Is, are these airport improvements good, bad, or indifferent? Just want to acknowledge that.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Question, decision on signing contract documents for the Gardner Airport project. Also runway improvements?
Yes, we got the award, and we did give it to contractors. So yeah, this is project will happen next year by the contractor.
And I believe the park service is chipping in as well?
Yeah, actually Gardner Resort Tax chipped in, Yellowstone Park is chipping in for the remainder of the match. Rest is grants.
Yeah, that airport is critical for wildlife research in Yellowstone Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's good to get an important project done at no cost to the county.
And great to get a commitment on the Yellowstone Park.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a few years ago, that was a challenge.
Yeah.
Thanks to them for participating. Motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign the contract documents for the Gardner Airport project.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Public comment on this? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Question, decision on signing FAA federal financial report. Another housekeeping item?
Yeah, it's done every year.
Yep. And this is covering all of airports, presumably Willcell if there's anything included there.
Pretty simple report.
Pretty simple report, yeah. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign the FAA federal financial report.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion. Again, this is an annual ritual. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Question, decision on signing an FAA request for advance or reimbursement. Respect to the FAA portion of the funding, which is the vast majority.
Right, because it's been approved by FAA.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign the FAA request for advance or reimbursement.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion decision to apply for DNRC emergency grant on behalf of Bear Creek Irrigators and Gardner. Kristen, are you on the line today?
I am here, Steve. You guys might have read the information about, from David Larson. He's the engineer from DNRC. And you might know that Bear Creek, the ditch washed out last year about this time. They did repair that. The Forest Service did provide some gravel and some funds toward that approximately $33,000 bill. They've applied for $10,000 through the emergency grant program. They need Park County to be that pass-through project sponsor entity in order for this to move forward, for them to get that $10,000 emergency grant. So David is still working on that final contract language, which he should have to meet this morning. But you would be approving that based on Kendra reviewing it.
Okay, thanks, Kristen. And this also has various levels of approval through DNRC, including the director. Okay, thanks, Kristen. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we apply for DNRC emergency grant on behalf of Bear Creek Irrigators.
I discussed this with Mike Bone last week, and certainly remember the event, and yeah, I will second that motion.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Discussion decision on abandonment of Park County right-of-way in Willcell. This is an item that's been floating out there for quite a while, and I think we are still waiting for the final road viewers report.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's only been six years.
It's only been six years. Okay. So looks like a postponement might be in order, a week or two?
Some would.
Second.
You got a date in mind?
You know, we should put a date down. Depends on a certain area.
Yeah, so you know, go out two weeks.
Sure.
It's been six years. That would be June 7. We have a motion to second for postponement until June 7. Any public comment now that we're here?
I'll make a very short public comment, just that I think it's really smart to be wary of abandonments and to make sure that we're not losing public access or right-of-ways that are important to our community when we're looking at those sorts of things, which I trust you are.
Yeah. Thanks, Michelle.
Six years.
Commission discussion. Yeah, we are certainly aware of that as being a consideration, and this is sort of an alley to nowhere. It makes sense. It's disconnected. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and we'll take it up again on the 7th. Go. Discussion decision to approve Gardner ground lease transfer.
Mr. Chair, the best I know about this is this Mr. Chapman is leasing the building that had, like, artifacts, art sculptures and stuff in it. A little log house, I believe it is. And Mr. Chapman's, leased it from that guy, transferred the lease to Mr. Chapman. And that's Bill Chapman's son.
Yeah.
Right. You know, they're basically saying, does it agree to sell the hangar to Doug and Pamela Chapman, get attention of the board approving and providing them with a new 20-year ground lease. So that's what we're looking at here. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion. My only question is just to lead off, has the airport board looked at this and has legal looked at this?
Don't know about legal.
And I don't know if I saw a dollar number on it.
No.
It's blank.
It sounds like it may not be ripe for discussion today?
Well, we could ship those probably.
Okay.
Might not take six years. That'd be good.
Yeah. Okay, that's insatiable. What do we think, a week or two or?
June 7?
June 7. Motion postponed to June 7.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. First of all, public comment on this agenda item again. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Discussion decision on second amended MOU for distributors and Janssen opioids settlement. This is a settlement that we'd signed an MOU with the state some time ago, and the state is, Attorney General's office is now proposing an amended MOU. And I'm just giving the introduction here because I'm not sure who's available from the attorney's office, but apparently the attorney's office received communication recently from a number of signers that are representing various counties who have serious reservations about this second amended MOU. The attorney, these are attorneys and, yeah, county attorneys and city attorneys, Deer Lodge, Ed County Deer Lodge, Cascade, Galt, and Great Falls, Lake County, Missoula City, Missoula County, and our attorney shares these reservations. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion.
So you say our attorney's office shares the reservations in that May 6 letter?
Yes, and I understand the reservations. We have copied the letters and attachments, so.
Right.
We could either take no action or deny. I'll be more decisive.
Right. Any public comment?
I think I asked for that, but yeah, public comment. Does anybody have any public comment?
If you choose to deny, you need to recommend a motion in support of and vote it down.
Yes, it should be a positive motion. Thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we denied a second amended MOU for distributors and Janssen opioid settlement.
Is there an alternative motion to approve, which is in discussion?
Second. Usually you would approve it, and then we would come down.
Yeah.
A positive motion, right?
Yeah. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moving second, discussion?
Thank you, Maryann.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
You withdraw that aye?
I withdraw the aye.
Okay. Next.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails.
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
No.
Yeah, special circumstances.
He missed a few there.
A few?
Two agenda items after Chapman.
Oh, I'm sorry. My agenda has disappeared. Hang on one second. Yeah, sorry, I was looking at the ground lease. So we'll go back to discussion, decision on MOU with MSU Park County Extension and Park County Environmental Council to support PCEC landscape conservation specialist and CWMA noxious weed monitoring work very well.
This was an attempt to get a lot of acronyms in one.
I won't even define them. I think most folks know what they mean, but.
The CWMA is the Cooperative Weed Management Area, and it's a group of stakeholders, both public, private, and government agency folks. Park County Environmental Council wrote a grant with AMB West to do monitoring and field test monitoring protocols that Dr. Jane Manuel at MSU developed. And so they were able to hire Bethany Allen, and she's working currently. The MOU just says that because PCEC's office space is limited, that she can have an office space at MSU Extension, Park County's office, and that she could also use the county vehicle to go access monitoring sites as opposed to her own private. This is incredibly valuable field testing. Right now, there's no statewide accepted protocol out for how to monitor noxious weed control. So everybody is watching this project across the state, whether it's the Department of Ag, or MSU, or all the extension offices, or the private, any private group, conservation or otherwise. So for us to be a partner, it just makes sense.
Good, thanks, Maryann. Public comment on this agenda item?
We just add that.
And I guess it's Michelle who brought it up.
Michelle Huberaga, Park County Environmental Council. Just would add that it's been a really exciting project and that we have also an incredible investment of time from, you know, Dr. Manuel. It's a really excellent partnership, and I would say that we don't have in-house expertise at PCEC or space, so it really is great for her to be there with the Extension Office. Are excited to continue to support the project by paying for Bethany's salary, making sure she's got insurance. And we do have insurance to cover her driving as well, which insurance the county does too. But just as FYI, she would probably be double covered because we added that coverage, knowing that Bethany would be doing a lot of field work.
Good, and this is a question I no longer need to ask. Thank you, Michelle. Additional public comment?
I forgot. So this is Maryann Keys. It went through MSU, MSU's legal team. It's currently going through Park County's legal team. And so I would fully support your recommendation to approve it based upon approval by legal counsel. It's also going through PCEC's legal. But this is a multi-step process. I did visit with Josh Post about NICO's insurance, and the commission just needs to grant her the permission to drive. We don't have to schedule drivers or times, and then the vehicle and the driver are covered under NICO's insurance.
Okay, good. How do you go about getting that permission to drive?
We just have to give it to us.
So we include that in the motion?
And that's why it's in, yeah.
I think point just did.
Yeah.
I did, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, commission discussion. So it looks like maybe we should consider approval dependent upon county attorney review.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, discussion.
You know, there's a lot of passion in Park County. It doesn't always pull in the same direction, but when it comes to noxious weeds, I believe it does.
There should be some unanimity on that.
Yes.
Yeah, great project, great partnership, and really solid partnership. Yeah, very good project. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All in favor?
Also, as mentioned, the weed department is a huge partner, so Teresa Postphile has been invaluable to have as well.
Absolutely. She is great.
We couldn't do it. We don't have that expertise.
Yeah, no, she's a great resource. Discussion decision to approve print release for the Fairgrounds and Parks Office. Morning, Morgan.
Item for a Canon printer lease that was approved during the FY21 budget season, actually, so a little outdated. There was never a formal PO actually put in place at the time. I wasn't quite sure of the process. And so the attachment is what we have been operating on with having this Canon printer lease. So I've spoke to the county, and there is another PO that will come to you for signature. But the Fairgrounds does currently have this Canon printer since December of 2021, or sorry, December 2020. Housekeeping mostly.
Good. Thanks, Morgan. Public comment on this agenda item? Just catching up with reality.
Figuring out process.
Figuring out process. Yeah, thanks. Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the print release for the Fairgrounds and Parks Office.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll look for that PO. Okay, county board recommendations. We have one discussion decision and a recommendation from the local advisory council to appoint applicant Granville Boone to the council. It's the local advisory council?
Yeah, Mr. Boone has participated in the last couple of LAC meetings and graciously submitted an application to join, and his perspective would add a lot to this group.
Yeah, and adds some representation from Southwest County.
That's perfect. Yeah, we definitely want their engagement.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Granville Boone to the local advisory council.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, county department updates. Let's see. Mark, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you. So we'll start with the county board meeting tonight, of course, through Zoom and in-person at the museum. Right now, we're really focused on programs and kicking off the summer season with programs, it seems like every weekend. We have coming up the Industry Day on the 7th, so doing a lot of landscaping and cleaning up outside of the museum, getting ready for that. Historically, our biggest event of the year, so we're looking forward to that. You'll see us putting up new wayfinding signs around town. If you recognize the old signs with the red posts and the warped plywood, those are getting a facelift, so the current logo and brighter and hopefully lasts a bit better in the weather. Those will be up in the coming weeks. So excited for that. Just been tired for a while to track.
Yeah, it'll be exciting.
Yeah, it'll be good. Kind of a neat, neat thing. Granville Show is meeting with us tomorrow, actually, trying to get a history of the area to see if they want to go over here and use some of the furniture. That'll be neat to see some of the museum's images today. International-type show. Two interns arriving in June for the museum. One will be with us for six weeks, one for 12 weeks. They'll be working on digitizing our collection. One will be digitizing the Yellowstone collection. And one will be cataloging some of the pieces and doing those in as perfect that they're moved in the 2021 HBDCO data museum. So that'll be nice to finally start going through some of those boxes. Yeah, and I'm going to take next Tuesday off, so if you leave me, I'll be gone.
It's been a long weekend. Good for you. All right.
Will you be gone if we don't need you?
I'll be here.
Yeah. Great, thanks, Mark. Morgan?
So two weeks ago, remember, the commissioners approved a facility fee waiver reduction for youth play. Those students have been hard at work practicing and just have been so excited to use the space. And this week, they're preparing to present the play for friends and family, and I guess any member of the public that want to see a play direct to about 14-year-olds. So they're going to be showing, let's see, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, 5:30 PM is when it starts, so I think tickets are $10. You can see that the benefit of our fee waiver reduction. Aside from that, I did receive some quotes for a concrete pad and storage barn so that we can just access storage in there a little bit easier. I received only one quote so far, was for $5,100. I received only one quote so far, was for $5,100. And the other contractors that I reached out to for a concrete pad are just completely booked for the season. I do have funding in the budget to pay for that, so if it would be appropriate for me to just go ahead and schedule that, I'd like to do so.
I think so. We'll just see a PO, and since it's in the budget.
You bet.
And would it need a purchase order for the work? Would that be a bid tabulation?
Well, if you only have one proposer.
Just jot down how many people he reached up to.
Yes, just a document.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
And aside from that, this Friday is the kickoff meeting for the water sewer replacement project at the Fairgrounds. So big meeting there, not within the works, and then the City of Livingston part works, as well as Staley. So super excited to see that project move forward. Although construction won't take place until later this year. It'll be good to have some solid plans. Other than that, just a lot of planning for summer. Trying to do some shuffling with picnic tables. So our park will get some of the picnic tables from the Fairgrounds. The ones that are there right now are pretty old, a little dilapidated, and just working on an improvement. So we'll be giving our flowers probably in the next week to the Fairgrounds, so things coming.
Pretty exciting. Thanks, Morgan. Kristen, anything before the projects today?
We, I did get two grants submitted last week. That would be BAWA for Caitlin Lavender's position, the victim witness coordinator, and she was quite a lot of help with that. So that was great to work with her. And then our newest MSEP grant is for Rock Creek Bridge, which is over the Hammond Creek Road near Clyde Park. That is a long process, but that has been submitted. They pay, if we get awarded, we get half of the funding for that project. And that won't take place until we hear from the legislature in February of '23. They make those final decisions. And I did, you guys saw, just submit our information for the second tranche of our ARPA funding. And the last thing I'm working on right now this week is a new minimum allocation grant app for the Fairgrounds water and sewer project. That should be submitted hopefully by Thursday, so we can get that project moving this summer and fall. That's all for this week.
Okay, thanks, Kristen. Yeah, just congratulations. Looks like we got the award for Glassy Baby from Big Sky Trust Fund.
Yeah, I'll be working with Prospera to move that into contract mode. And then they didn't get as much as we applied for, but they did get a significant amount. So we'll start that process.
It's a $215,000 toward 43 new net jobs at Glassy Baby, so nothing to sneeze at.
Yeah.
All right. Mike, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm here. Good morning. So for planning this week, our big push is to get all the legal notices out for the zoning district process. We have to have everything in place 45 days before the first public hearing. So we're gonna try to get all that done by the end of the week, although we do have a grace period next week. Some of the legal notices have already published in the enterprise, and we'll have more of those today, this Friday, and next Tuesday. So we putting the notices in five public places in addition to kind of getting it out to the different chambers and public places throughout the county. If you guys know of places you want me to put it outside of what we identified in our process, just let me know. Or if you hear of folks that would like copies, I'm always happy to provide those. We have a board training scheduled for the planning board for their June 16th timeframe meeting. The training will be from 1:30 to 4:30 in the community room. It will be open to the public, but the public will not be participating in the training, but they can come in and observe if they would like. And then our regular board meeting will commence in person at 5 o'clock, just following the board training. And then just wanted to let you guys know, project that you probably haven't heard of yet, where I'm working with Headwaters Economics to put together a proposal for AMBOS to consider funding that would be a research project, kind of tying in some of the CPo work that we've done, but then also looking at statutes in adjoining states in the Northwest that deal with land use, some of the enabling laws in other places in order to try to determine if there are better ways in the state of Montana to conduct land use planning. So once that proposal's kind of put together, I'll have Headwaters present something to you guys. We're hoping to have that done by July. Outside of that, it's just kind of business as usual here in the planning office.
Okay, and I'll just note too, while we're on it, we did have a comment from Christina Nelson requesting permission to post the statutory public process information on Facebook. I think I gave her the enthusiastic go-ahead, and I think, Mike, you provided the final release, so thanks for that.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Greg, are you on the line this morning?
No, no. Good morning, I am. Good morning. See, last Thursday, I was at a regional DES meeting, and they highlighted many grant opportunities for mitigation funding. There's so much money available because it's been shown that $4, that you save $4 for every dollar invested in mitigation. This last weekend, I participated in the Fire Wardens Conference and learned that the DNRC will be announcing funding to update the community wildfire protection plans. I intend to apply as our plan was last updated in 2014 and should be updated every five years. We've begun the process of updating our hazard mitigation plan. FEMA requires these plans to be updated every five years in order to be eligible for federal mitigation funding. This year, the state's paying for a regional process, and that's gonna save us about $25,000, which is what we spent the last time we updated our plan. Invites have gone out to our local partners for the first planning meeting, which is this Thursday. Participating with the Health Department tomorrow in a public health emergency preparedness workshop. And we're looking into a new phone paging service for the first responders. We're currently using Safe Alert and Active 911. That's two separate services. We're test-driving e-dispatches, which essentially combines the capabilities of the two services we now have into one service that'll simplify things and be easier for the first responders to navigate. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Ms. Dr. Desnick with you. Does she have anything to contribute this morning?
Yeah, good morning. I just this second got the update from the hospital. Of course, as we all know, COVID is very much on the rise, knocking out whole groups of workers, unfortunately, in businesses and organizations around the county. Hospital now has several admits, some quite ill, having been moved to higher level of care in Bozeman and Billings. So we're encouraging everyone, particularly with any underlying condition and honestly, without a vaccination, to either stay out of large indoor settings or be sure you have a well-fitting mask. Otherwise, health department's going well, very busy. That's it.
Hey, thank you, doctor. It sounds like, I think, I know Lisa and Erica are downstairs at the open enrollment, or either of those participating in the call or not. Okay, and Matt is on vacation. So let's see, Shannon, are you available this morning? Okay, I think we covered everyone. Did I miss anybody? Let's go to project updates, public transportation.
I think I might have told you guys, I'm not sure. We did get some, an AED grant funding to put some AED units in our buses, which is great. We are helping with some special events. We just finished the spurball on Friday, and we will help out with Tap into Montana. Our hotel shuttles from downtown to the exit 333 area begin on June 3rd, Fridays and Saturday evenings, to just help with the parking situation downtown. And for those who want to have a little fun downtown and don't want to drive back. And the metal for the new building arrived last week unbeknownst to anyone. So we have that stacked and stored actually where those old two storage sheds were. It has no interference with the Roundup Association where they park things. They are, that is stacked right on the foundation where those buildings were. So moving forward soon, hopefully with the concrete foundation.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
All right, Shields Valley Communication Project.
The building's now in place up there, and they're going to construct and stand the tower the week of June 6.
Okay, great. Growth policy implementation.
So for growth policy, this is Mike. I've got a couple things. So I've got a board recommendation that I've been waiting to schedule before you guys. You know, if you recall, a few meetings ago, you received a public comment in the form of a legal opinion from an attorney that basically called out our process for updating the growth policy. I've emailed the county attorney's office to see if they are going to be providing a legal opinion relative to that or not. So just waiting to hear back from them before I move forward with that recommendation. You will be having a recommendation coming, I believe, next Tuesday to consider whether or not you guys want to start the process of considering the Housing Action Plan as an addendum to the growth policy. And if you do, we'll now would follow statutory process, go before the planning board through a series of public hearings, and then they may make a recommendation by resolution for you guys to do that. So between those two, you'll definitely have one at the next meeting, hoping to hear back from the attorney's office before I move forward with the board recommendation.
Great, good. Thanks, Mike. President Knott Road, nothing for me, no updates?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Cybersecurity network upgrades.
Just the latest from Erica in CompuNet. The setup user accounts, the configuring for the GPO for Park County domain and the configured scan is complete. And I think they're kind of wanting to duplicate that for the city and through their cybersecurity networks. As you know, we apply for funding, but the city gets some of that work for their networks as well. So I think the city portion is what we're finishing up on right now.
Okay, good, good. Garden Captain Improvement Plan.
Kathy and her team were also busy with MSEP grants the last three weeks, but now they are working on the project definitions for that project and the base document, and then planning to schedule a survey for the streets that Matt was wanting upgraded.
Good, good. I know there's plenty of interest in that down there. Down there, up there?
You know, south is down, but it's upriver.
It is. Okay, minimum allocation infrastructure projects.
I will be applying or submitting that Fairgrounds sewer and water application hopefully this week.
Thanks, Kristen. Public comment for the above projects? Meeting minutes, we have a couple.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for March 1st, 2022, and May 12th, 2022.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Corrections, comments.
Thank you, Carly.
Thank you, Carly.
Great time.
It looked great. All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Instant items, daily correspondence and public comments.
Wow, a lot of calls on roads, a lot of calls. Hopefully, we can get on those, where we are, but. That's all I got.
Yeah, I will just second that roads were the subject of much discussion at the candidate forum last evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
The discussion on roads?
Yeah, well, and the forum.
All right, Mr. Ferg.
I had a lengthy conversation with a Pine Creek resident yesterday who's been also been in contact with the sheriff about the activity in the area when there are events at Pine Creek Cafe and Lodge. And this individual apparently has talked to the sheriff, and I'll pursue that, about parking regulations and what we, the county has. And garden residents brought up parking considerations a few years ago, and Shannon and I uncovered MCA 7-14-2106. And that allows for parking regulations in unincorporated places. So this person just wondered if there was some way to mitigate some of the impacts of those activities.
Wasn't there some consideration that that has to be a county-wide ordinance?
I don't know. These folks also uncovered a stillwater ordinance regarding parking on one particular road over there. So I just told him our attorney's office is pretty busy right now, but that I would circle up with the sheriff and the attorney's office when they had some bandwidth and just see if there's any room for reason here. Also, roads, 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 a lot of passionate gardener over roads. Talking with the road supervisor. It sounds like they may be able to get a greater in the gardener tomorrow. And my foreman emailed, he sent about some patching bottlenecks and a piece of equipment that he feels that we could use to be a little more self-sufficient.
And I had some conversations with him this morning about that.
Yeah.
I could use him to buy more toys. This looks like it's kind of a gotta-do.
A gotta-do, yep. And there were some website messages that came through in one big, is that the word of the day?
Yeah, I'm not sure why. It seemed to have come in on a variety of dates.
Yeah, and they were weeks old, which was frustrating.
Have you spoken with Erica about that?
Previously, I did. You know, it was a result of security measures we put in place last fall. And there are some technical issues that Erica was working through, and I don't think we're quite there yet.
Okay, so she's aware of it, though?
She is, yep. But I responded to Mr. Higley or Hiley on the boulder and told them I'd circle up with Matt and get back in touch with him. And then, just to shout out, Morgan and I have talked about this briefly, but the conference at MSU last week, I had a couple of discussions with the Park Service about plans they had through the week of August 23rd. You may have seen an outfit called Mountain Time Arts, which had a display on Peach Hill last winter of some lit teepees. They're gonna do that installation just inside the north entrance, so it'll be visible from Park Street and Gardner. And they are also looking to put together an encampment of teepees in the area, not just for some of the indigenous Americans to live for that week, but also as kind of living history demonstration. And the Park Service has some things they'd like to talk to us about with respect to our park.
And I think that demonstration is also on our museum director's radar.
Yeah.
I can remind them of that this evening.
Yeah, so 150 years of Yellowstone National Park is a big deal, but the Anzac Child showed us that indigenous Americans have been here for some 12,000. That's it.
Okay. Just a quick question, were there any dates set for follow-up meetings on the compact after you? I wasn't here for that initial meeting.
No dates set.
Tori Lyons didn't seem to think that there were, but I can circle up with the city on that.
No.
Okay. We should. I think the city manager had a goal, which I think is a good one, of having everything in place by July 1.
We just talked about that, and, you know, for starters, that framework document that we looked at.
Yeah, it sounds like there was general agreement on that, but there was like a good good agreement.
You're gonna run that through the attorney's office, I believe.
We will, yeah, we should.
I can't prejudge the city manager, too, I'd ask. Does the doodle pole work for you all to?
It does.
At times, we all work, too.
Yeah, maybe if you could have, ask him to maybe have faith, go through the same process again. I think that seemed to work pretty well.
And then we just want to make sure, if any of you didn't get the information before the meeting, so make sure we get you that, too.
Thanks, Gary. Also received a communication from the city manager regarding the allocation of building maintenance costs. Just wondering if there was some thoughts in terms of how to proceed on that. We have several agreements that date back to 1974, '75, '76, '78.
You make it sound like that's a long time.
It is a long time ago in most of our worlds. But the original agreements actually set forth by contract those cost-sharing mechanisms. And I understand the rationale, and I'm conceptually not opposed to it. I think it just reflects reality. But I know Matt had some concerns about one of those elements, but it may make sense to look at forming a new contract that aggregates or supersedes the preceding contracts and maybe points to the compact as a way of periodically addressing those allocations.
Makes all kinds of sense.
That look like a good way to go?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I agree with the percentage that was offered there. Yeah, I'm not sure if I agree with the percentage that was offered there.
Agreed, yeah, yeah. But at least that'd be a good framework for the discussion. I'll tell the city manager and say let's set something up. Okay, got a call from Jan Lucan Bill, who has been working with Loren Zahn in terms of talking with several of the players that are involved in terms of the senior center having some financial difficulties, and asking if we would consider paying their property tax bill. I don't think there's a mechanism for us to do that this year. It's fifty-seven hundred dollars. I suggested we might consider waiving that, but apparently we don't even have that option, because the commission has the authority to waive penalties and interest, but not the underlying assessment. So if you guys could give some thoughts of maybe how to approach that, and we can circle that. Had a good lunch with Rachel Jones and the Fonda School folks last Friday, and they're doing some great work. They have a pretty ambitious budget and program, and so they had several folks in town from Helena as well. So it was a, it was a good get-together, and I learned quite a bit. Library Board meeting last week, a lot of the focus was on the proposed upgrades to the library meeting room. There apparently was, there were, there were several ethnic aspects or instances of miscommunication, a lack of communication. And I'll, I'll blame those, for what it's worth, on the fact that things kind of went silent for about a year. And who's waiting on the county to issue an R F Q, they've done that. We've had one proposer walk through the library. The end date for that open period is May thirty-first. I think the idea is to take it to the city commission for approval of one of the specs. I suggested to the library board and also one of the representatives of Friends Board during that meeting that we, instead of taking it straight to a decision item, we have a workshop involving the city and county commissions, Friends Board, the library board, as a public meeting as well, just to make sure that the information is, is general among all the, all those concerned. And so that, that, if that meets with approval, I'll try to initiate that process.
I'm one person, but it sounds like an excellent idea to me.
Right. And it sounds like the chair of the Friends Board is knocking around for the first week in June, so maybe the second or third week, just to aim at, but I'll, I'll see what makes sense.
Actually, I had a lot of calls on that.
I, yeah.
Or against.
Yep, yep. And there was quite a bit of discussion during the library board meeting about it. The library board is actually in favor of it, but without having seen any of the specs, it's hard to tell what they're looking at. Library directors are enthusiastic about the upgrades, so hopefully we get to, to a point of agreement for all concerned. And that's all I have. Fisher comments?
I have none.
Healthy as well as today. Go down and get measured.
Yeah, yeah. And also the blood draw and open enrollment is going on as we speak.
Yeah.
So it looks like we have a compensation board meeting at ten in this room. Cook City tomorrow, I think we're gonna carpool down. We'll meet you probably at the Range Rider.
Well, if you have room for me, I'll hop on, otherwise I'll meet you out there.
Okay, I'll give it a look when we leave town and just see what kind of spaces.
Yeah, give me a text or a call.
Yeah.
We'll let Cory know, too.
Yeah, yeah. And got a budget meeting at noon, from noon to two on Thursday. And you have the ribbon cutting at Dunlop and Pass Friday.
And H R D C board meeting Thursday morning.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving second. All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn at nine fifty-four. Reconvening in six minutes with the compensation board.